Uh. So, so the first item on, so this is a council meeting and as soon as council member.
Yeah, I think everybody's, I think everybody's in now.
Okay. And I'll. So I'm calling the council meeting to order and. Because our third council member is not present yet, council member Kymar. Uh, we will defer the swearing in until uh he arrives. And the first item is um public hearing and. And um action on pool fees for this season. And um unfortunately, there was a lot of confusion at the last meeting and a number of citizens. Didn't have the opportunity to comment on the pool fee, so we will start with uh public comments. On the pool things. Uh, and if you, uh, first of all, we didn't, we. Uh, I'm sorry. I neglects exact time manager to uh announce the protocols for the meeting.
Sure, uh, so uh, the meeting is being recorded for everybody's awareness, um, so we'll make it available after the fact. Uh, for folks to watch uh or um. Uh, to re-watch if, if you're so inclined. Uh, we ask that folks use either the raise hand function or you can send a chat directly to me. Uh, letting me know that you wish to make a, a public comments um when the opportunity arises. Um, ask that folks that do uh do speak, state your name and your add uh your street. Uh, for the record. And um if our meeting gets interrupted one way or another, um, that doesn't allow us to carry on with our business. We'll, we'll end the meeting, I'll disseminate. Uh, instructions on, on rejoining the meeting uh immediately so that we can restart and carry on as scheduled. Um, and that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So as I was saying, at the last town meeting, uh, there was a bit of confusion. Regarding uh agenda items related to the pool. And uh, I, I will, I, I, I want to apologize that uh for what happened. But what the town manager and the council president and I decided to do was to give an opportunity. At this special um council meeting so that this, our, our citizens could comment. Uh, on the uh pool fees. Proposed whatever. If, I don't think there was a specific proposal, but I know that people wanted to comment on the existing fees. And then after the comment, so may then the council can decide whether they wish to take action. So with that, uh. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, could you let us know who would like to speak first, please?
Sure, and uh, just, just to quickly set the table for you all, if you, I think really the only one where there's some, uh, there's maybe two where there's a question. One is the aerobics fees and as you might recall last year, uh, using the uh. Using the data that we did have for participation in order to try and break even. We raised the aerobics fee from eight dollars to ten dollars. Um, the water aerobics is structured a little bit differently than early morning swim, for instance, where people just pay per class. Um, as it turned out, we would have been able to recoup our fees. Uh, for the water aerobics instructor if they had been eight dollars. So some, some of the participants have asked that we lower it back down to eight. Um, and that's kind of what, what the council can decide. Um, and I, I kind of laid out in the document for you. What the, what the differences were. Think eight would have been at a very, very small loss, um, and it would have been about eleven hundred dollars or so. Uh, we made about eleven hundred dollars or so, um. Above what the instructor cost last year. And the fees to the instructor this year are unchanged from last year. Um, so with that, um, looks like the first person who wanted to make a comment is Lucy Freeman.
Hey.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I can't, oh, there, okay, uh, but I was gonna, this Lucy Freeman, I'm at four seven one. Oh, okay, I have a message here. I'm Lucy Freeman, now I'm at four seven one nine Ballstone Avenue. And in the beginning, I was gonna say pretty much what Matt said, that last year, the. Town and the council and the water aerobics participants didn't have accurate information. But now we do and we know that last year, the bill was, the invoice was four thousand six hundred fifty-five. The attendees paid in five thousand seven hundred and sixty, so this was in excess of one thousand one hundred and five. Or sort of like we overpaid around twenty-three percent. So what we are asking since the. Fee, the, the, the charge of the company will be the same as it was last year, ninety-five per session. That the fee be this year, eight dollars and uh, we're happy to pay our fair share. I mean, everyone's, will be happy to pay eight dollars. I imagine if we run short, we'll chip in a little more. And um, I guess that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Uh, next is Judith Bald, Baldinger, if uh Judy, if you're, you're there. Give her a.
Okay, now, now you can hear me, I think.
Yes, we can hear you.
And now I can start the video, okay. So the previous speakers have pretty much summarized what I was going to say. Except for one other thing, which may or may not. Prove to be accurate, and that is that some people will. Please mute yourself. Um, that some people may decide. That at eight dollars a session, they'll go to all three for twenty-four bucks a week. Where they might not have gone to all three for thirty bucks a week, so we could actually come out. Ahead by lowering the cost. Math is not my strong suit, so if I'm saying something ridiculous, someone can tell me later. But I think um Lucy really summed it up very well. And as a, a water aerobics participant for, as long as it's been available in the town. I'm eager to have it be uh what I think of as a more equitable uh fee.
Thank, thank you for your testimony and we respect all comments, nothing is ridiculous. We'll take that out of the record. Okay, next, Mr.
Okay.
Next, next is Barbara Condos.
Councilmember Condos. You're muted, Councilwoman Condos.
Yeah, I got it. Um, anyway, thank you. Uh. I just want to back up what Lucy and Judy said. Um, it seems that eight dollars. Undoubtedly will cover the, the cost of providing an instructor and um. As we have discussed, if we go over, we're happy to make up the difference. Uh, right now, we have donated one thousand five dollars, I believe, to the town from last year. So anyway, um, I'm just here to back up Lucy and Judy, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, Eileen Heller has her hand up.
Welcome.
Okay, just starting my video, um, I just, you know, echo what um, other um. Water aerobics buddies have been saying that, you know, we overpaid last year and it would seem equitable that if there is a shortfall, we can take from what we overpaid last year. And then we're happy to contribute to make up the rest, so the town is not out of um any money on. It's a really important activity and I think a lot of the people in this group are seniors. Many of them um may be on fixed incomes and, you know, this, the dollar amount can make a difference.
Thank you for your testimony.
There's no other hands up at this time.
Okay, so I will end the public hearing and I will turn it over to the council president. For a discussion and possible action.
Hey, um, thank you neighbors for your comments, um. I, I think, so my fellow council members, I, I think that um. It makes perfect sense to lower the fee. The whole objective of having these was to make this basically a revenue neutral activity for the town. Uh, so I'm, I would be happy to lower this fee to eight dollars. But on the subject of pool fees while we're talking about this. I realized that, at least for myself, when we voted on the pilot swim training form expert uh. Thing, thing, um. As it were. We approved going ahead with the pilot, I think there should also, I think that part of that pilot should be. A modest fee. And, and I think I heard it said that it would be like forty dollars an hour, so I don't know how many people are expected, I don't. I'm not suggesting that we try to calculate what would be revenue neutral, but I think that part of that whole effort should be. A small fee, which would also, I think, help with registration, help with monitoring participation. So I would propose, say, a fee of. Ten dollars. For that expert advice. That's, that's my thought. We can go around, Robin, do you have any thoughts on, on both or anything else related to pool fees?
I mean, I'm. I, I, I'll go with eight dollars if that's giving them the answer, but I do want to explain federal on. Budgeting because it's relevant here. In giving grants to institutions, um. You give both the direct costs for the work involved, but you also get the addition to that. What are known as facilities and administrative costs. Which are, you know, the cost of keeping the lights on, that kind of thing. You know. And.
Machine, go for a walk.
And that is usually averaging about fifty percent of the direct costs. Budget, I think, award. And we do have facilities of ministry of course at the pool, uh, there's a huge facility that this cost in fact happening in the coming year, fiscal year, like before, where uh, there's seven hundred. Plus those who spent online, um. And so. We, we, we should in the future budget in when we're planning fees, both. Our facilities cost as well as the direct cost of the. In the pool. Um, because if we don't do that, we're costing ourselves. But with that explained, uh, we haven't, that hasn't been or practiced yet, um. I will say, by the way, for those of you who think that eight dollars is going to generate more money. Last year, I think the highest revenue was generated from water aerobics at any decent year at all. So the ten dollar fee did not scare people away, instead of war people's well. But, um, that'd be all right.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Robin. Like, Kabir, I think you're online.
That means technically maxed.
I can go last, uh.
Alright, thank you.
I'm on.
Okay, Debbie, for you, you're muted.
Sorry, um, I am, I'm happy to bring the fees down to eight dollars. And then I think next year, we have to put into our discussion just what Robin was talking about, you know, do we. We put in any administrative costs? I think we need a way to look at that, and I don't know if that's something that the budgeting committee will do with us. Or if it's, we need somebody else who's, you know, a financial person to explain that's a good, how, how, how to approach this sort of thing. But I think we should put it, put it out there for next year as we look at these, these things. And Steve, as to what you said about the, um. You know, charging the stroke and turn people, I agree with you, I think there should be something, and I think they can do that. Because they're gonna have to sign up through member splash. I don't know that I would charge ten dollars, but I think I might do five dollars. So that's my two cents.
How about eight? And I hear, I hear eight, make it the same as water aerobics, okay. Thank you very much, your comments, Debbie, so now we go to Shannon.
Um, so I agree that we should take the eight dollar, do eight dollar fee for water aerobics. And I agree with you that there should be a fee for this. Stroke and turn clinic, which, you know, was, I thought, passed through very haphazardly at the last meeting with no discussion. And I think that, um, as far as like the facility kind of charge built in, you know, we have a guest fee. That's four dollars for every guest and, you know, that goes to nothing, so like that's a facility charge in a certain way. Um, so, I mean, that's, it doesn't cost us anymore to have extra people at the pool. Um, and so all that money is in, in sense, goes to towards, you know, what you're talking about there. Um, and that's it.
Good, good points, thank you, Kabir. Not the self.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I think we, not sure what the process is here, but I'd love to ask Matt and the residents some questions.
Well, that's the process, the public hearing's over.
Yeah, but we didn't, we, council was not given.
You can, you can, you can ask, you can ask Matt a question. You're welcome to ask.
So I can ask questions, I cannot ask questions?
You can ask Matt a question.
I can ask one question?
You can ask as many questions you'd like to ask.
Question.
I can ask Matt, okay, okay. Um, Matt, what is your proposal? Just to be clear, because you have given us options. And admittedly, I'm not hundred percent clear which option you are recommending.
Uh, yeah, I, I, and I wasn't clear on uh specific recommendation, um. I, 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 I think that council member Barr uh summed up my thoughts on it pretty well. I think that eight dollars um is. It, that covers. More or less, I think, I think if we took the exact same participation last year and worked it out for the number of classes that are scheduled, we'll have a gap of about a hundred fifty dollars this year. But it more or less covers the cost of the instructor. Um, I do think that as part of our budgeting, it makes sense to get kind of a. What does it cost per person to run the pool? And then that, that can help inform what should our guest fees be, what should the cost of these extra classes be, things like that. Um, and then it helps us have a better understanding of what our, what our overall budget for the pool is too. Um, so I, I think for me, I, I, I would also recommend eight, eight dollars per class at, at this point. Um, in turn, in terms of the stroke and technique, um. I, I, I agree with council member Roback that it, it. It was sort of a proposal that. I don't, I don't know that it went through a lot of rigorous discussion and debate. Um, it seems, I, I think the intent of it making, of making it free was to. Gin up support for this new class the first time it happens and then perhaps in future years. Look at what the participation rate was to then have a better idea of what would be kind of our break even on that. But um, in terms of fairness and, uh, and equity, I, I, I don't understand why. Uh, why somebody would not pay for expert swimming lessons but would pay for water aerobics? Or what, why we charge families to put their kids through a swimming team, but not adults to take swimming lessons with the same teacher?
So sorry, just to clarify, you're proposing eight dollars and you believe you will recover the costs?
It's hard to, it's hard to say for, for water, for water.
Hard for you to say.
For, for what, are you asking for water aerobics?
Yeah, that's on, that's on.
For water aerobics, I think, I think eight dollars makes sense, given, given the criteria we've used before. Given that the goal right now is to cover the cost of the teacher, I think eight dollars is the best approximation of that.
And you based that approximation based on attendance last summer?
Correct.
We do, do we have attendance previous summers?
Well, that's the reason we raised it to ten last year is.
What was the reason?
Is, is because if we took the signups that we had.
Yeah.
Versus the total cost, we estimated it would cost about eight, ten dollars per person to do, to break even. And we just had, we had a higher participation than we expected.
And it, so help us understand that, that's because it was COVID, the previous year we had no participation. I, I can't ask the.
It's.
Folks that, you know, presenting, so I don't know.
It's hard to, it's, it is hard to really know because A, A, it was COVID. It was also the first year that we required people to do signups in that way.
Last year.
So it was, it was kind of our first year where we had data, so this is, you know, we have new data that's saying maybe eight dollars is closer, so it's.
No, I heard, I think it was Barbara. Um, who said that they would, the, the water aerobics group. Will, will cover the cost of that if we fall short, what does that mean?
Well, I think that they were offering that as uh. An option in case there, in case the town was. If, if it was.
Someone that, but I mean, oh, we don't.
I don't, I don't know how practically we would really do that.
We would not do.
I, I mean, I. It, it would be, it would be kind of a convoluted, messy system to try to do that, I don't think it's for systems.
Set up where somebody can, A, you, you set the fee for the season, that's it, you can't.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that we would have a good.
We won't, so that's why I should ignore that.
I, I, I don't, I don't think that's really working.
So it is eight dollars and you believe, be, based on the number, if you have the same numbers last summer, we will recover costs. So if you have less numbers, we will not recover.
At the, at the exact same participation rate as last year.
We would more than recover.
We would have a gap of about a hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Okay, running out, okay, yeah, okay. Okay, so, so you, I'm going on your recommendation. All right. So you think we will recover costs, you're confident that you will be able to recover this, if it lasts. That, and I, I, we cannot decide that, right? You have to give us the numbers and give us the sense of. Uh, unfortunately, we don't have, you have to give us numbers and give us a sense that it's costly.
It is, as much as, as much as like, as much, as confident as like Andy, I, I mean, this is based on the data from last year, the. And I think this year is probably a closer approximation to last year than last year was to the year before.
That's true.
So I think.
You know, the, the trouble with that question is you can be more connected if you keep the ten dollars. Well. Costs than if we lower it to eight dollars. But it seems likely that if it is lowered to eight dollars, we will recover costs.
I see, so what about nine dollars?
Well, I sug, I, I actually suggested that and.
I, I think I heard someone say even a one dollar difference is a big deal. If I'm not mistaken.
I think.
And we're currently at ten dollars, right?
I think part of it was, you know, it, it's, there's, I think, thirty-nine scheduled classes, so. Yeah, I think for people that are on a really tight budget, maybe they felt like forty dollars might be the difference, you know. Between attending all the classes versus none of them. Part of it was, uh, people had expressed that it would be harder for them to track how much money was in their account. Because nine, I guess as an odd number, was just kind of not as intuitive as maybe eight or ten. Um. Nine, you know, I, I think at nine dollars, I, I, I would. I, I would feel more confident that we would a hundred percent recover it, um, whether it's worth, you know, whether it's worth it or not.
What, what?
Whether, whether it's, whether that, you know, that two hundred or, uh. You know, that three hundred fifty, four hundred fifty dollars, you know, that's a gap of four hundred fifty dollars, basically. Um. I don't know if that's the difference between making, between the gap or not, between, uh, I'm not expressing this well, I'm sorry. I don't know if that will be the difference between not paying for it and paying a little bit over, or if it's just extra excess money, um. Then.
I see, so is it fair to say that, let's say we brought it back to eight dollars? And at the end of the season, we realize we didn't recover our costs. How would we decide, you think, in the future, would we? How would we make this call?
Well, it's, it is always.
I, I, I couldn't feel any pressure. Because while the residents here are focused on water aerobics and they should, because that's what they care about. We are stewards of the entire town's resources and for everyone in town. And I think the general principle of our activities being cost-recoverable is a noble effort. We should be pursuing that as best, the smallest of the largest.
Yeah.
Getting better and better at it, you know.
The way that, the way that we structure signups, it's all, there's always gonna be a variability to it because. Somebody might decide the weather stinks, so I'm not gonna go to the class, or they might go on vacation that summer, um. And there was pushback for doing a whole summer signup.
No one has, no one has done that, there's no predictability in this, is what you're saying.
Correct, and, and their, their, last year, that was one of the things that we tried to do, is to do a preemptive sign up. So that we knew, and then we could better set a per, a drop in rate, but.
Didn't work.
Yeah, yeah, because the participants have, well, I remember it was the summer and people have vacations and things like that, so they drop in and drop out of water aerobics.
I see.
So there's always, at least as long as we keep that, there's always going to be some variability. If the more data we have over years, I, I guess the, 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 the more data we have to inform our decision. Um. So I, that's, that's my non-ans, non-answer answer.
Thank you. And that, that's the only item we're discussing right now.
But then the other pool fee is the stroke and turn.
Is there any documentation on it?
There's no.
It's a pilot program, so there's.
The, the, the argument which was at the end of the meeting, uh. At our last meeting was that it was the first year program, we were uncertain how many people were going to be there. Perhaps we should not have us be for it initially, can we get a.
That, yeah, you're right, oh, of you.
And so there probably might be an OP, but I, I mean, on the other hand, it, it is absolutely right that we're charging every other extra activity. Some dollar amount for it, whether it's water aerobics, early morning swim or swim team. So it seems appropriate that we should charge a fee for this too.
Can, can, is there a proposal?
The, the.
Do, do we have a proposal in front of me?
No, um, because I, I don't want to pick arbitrary, yeah.
Can I say something? I'm sorry, it's kind of awkward to be on, to be not there, but I don't think any of you wanted COVID, so. Anyway, um. I think we're beating a dead horse, alright? We have heard from the residents, we know what they want. We know we don't have all the data we really need to make, to make a really informed decision. But we're not talking about a huge amount of money, talking about a little bit amount of money if we have a shortfall. I think.
Are you talking about stroke and?
I'm talking, wait, give me a second, one second, I'm sorry.
No, no, what are you talking about, sorry?
Water aerobics, okay?
Water aerobics, okay.
So I think we should go with the eight dollars. And then we're, we have good records from last year, hopefully we'll have good records from this year. And then we can bring this back to the table and really flesh out our programs and how we want to approach them. And how we make sure we don't lose money at this, or if we want to lose money, I don't know, we can talk about that. But I think we need to just move on with this, and I think we should have a fee for the stroke, the stroke clinic as well. I would like to, to call the question.
Ready to make a motion? Are you ready to make a motion?
I am.
Debbie, what's, what's your motion?
Wait, hold on. Hold on.
She's.
No, I have a question.
She said she is the floor.
But we don't have.
She has the floor.
I'm okay with getting a question from computer.
And I reported last time too.
Yeah, there'll be discussion after she makes a motion.
Oh.
Are you ready to make a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
And, um, I, 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 um, my motion is I think we should set the water aerobics fee for eight dollars for this year. Set the stroke and turn clinic fee five dollars per, per participant. And then, I don't know if this is relevant to the motion, but then we analyze.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, discussion now, Ms. Councilor, I don't have a question. I thought you had a question. Okay, is there probably discussion, here you go, I'll listen, okay, fine, thank you.
The next, oh, sorry, just for the record. We were not given enough information to make a.
Okay, you.
No, 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 don't, don't patronize me, we were not given enough information.
You have the right to say that.
Yes, I do.
That's right, that's what I said, that's not patronizing. The next item is the LGBTQ pride declaration. That we have wanted, but we, we, since LGBT, you pride month is June, we wanted to put it on the May agenda, but we failed to do so. The May agenda, but we failed to do so, so is there, it's, the rest of the years, I don't know much. Right, so I move that we declare June LGBTQ pride month in town. I heard council vote, who my second, is there discussion, hearing that, I'll listen to you.
I.
Thank you. We will now go into the work session and I will turn it over to our distinguished council members.
Okay. Hello, everyone, okay. Thank you, that was, I'm. I'm glad we're able to, uh, tackle some of those topics in the council meeting, we know the work session, we have a lot of items. Um, we may have to shuffle some of them off to the future, because. One of my personal objectives as we move forward is to keep it in time schedule, all possible. Um, first I'm talking about is the charter amendment on voting age. Now, we're not voting on whether or not to change the charter tonight. The question is, do we ask the town attorney to prepare the charter amendment? For introduction at the June meeting, is that correct? Ron?
Already been prepared, Mr. President.
Okay.
Just had to change the date because I prepared it months ago for our last discussion.
So this is for introduction, would it be for introduction at the June meeting or for actually voting on it at the June meeting?
For introduction.
For introduction, so we'll have more time to discuss it, we know what the results are, but it was a non-binding forum. A non, non-binding referendum. So we still have to make a decision with the council.
I, I think that I do recommend that we introduce that at the June meeting.
Yes, perfect, so we have concurrence on that, okay. Uh, full repairs.
So, so I think that the. Council has to vote to, uh.
It's two, two council members need to agree to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, three, three, anyhow.
I support, I support it.
I support it.
Isn't that right, Mr. Town Attorney? We need to have three councilors to agree to put it on the agenda, we go four now.
I.
Yeah.
I believe, I I believe it's two, Mr. Mayor, when we, when we adopted the policy for legislation, let me pull that up.
I think it's three, because we had to.
We go four now, doesn't matter.
You have five, nobody's counting me, you guys don't pay attention to me, I'm down there with my COVID, okay?
I have to make sure, okay. Full repairs. What do you want, cover there?
Sure, so, um, I attached, we, we ended up with three proposals. One of them I didn't really feel like was complete, we did get a request from another company to. Extend the date that we were accepting proposals, um, they said that they just were kind of swamped with. Uh, work and weren't able to get it in in time, but. My recommendation, based on the bids that we do have, I think we have a good sense of what needs to happen. This is something that we've been talking about for a while. And one of our primary concerns is that we know that the work needs to get done this year. And so in order to ensure that we go through proper permitting and, and go get, get that done in time. Um, I, I do recommend that we move this on to the agenda for the next month. Um, as opposed to holding out for another bid, um. I recommend, based on the bids that we did receive, that we move forward with American Pool's proposal, um. Mainly, this is a, uh. Financial recommendation based on how it stacks up versus the other proposals. Um, but I, I think that there is a, a bit of a built-in advantage that they're familiar with our pool. Uh, they're familiar with the infrastructure of our pool. They know when our pool season is, so they're aware of the deadlines and, um, have already tentatively kind of been prepping. Prepping for that, um, and have known for several years that this work is coming up the pike. So I, I, I do recommend that we invite American Pool to our next council meeting. And that the council consider their proposal, um, to approve it, um, at the June meeting.
Thank you, um. I don't have any questions, but is a, a comment about the potential for another. Another proposal, if, if we waited long. I just want to go around, so Robin, your question.
No, I mean, first of all, there were two very strong proposals, um, that were received, um, and either one looks capable of doing the work. So I think we've got a choice. The third proposal, actually, when you read it, um, they propose an hourly rate for replacing the pipes. Uh, so their actual proposal isn't an hour and twenty-five thousand, it's whatever number of hours in their hourly rate it would be. And the, the reason that they're doing that is they're uncertain of how many hours it's going to be, and I didn't want to say it, that's what it went into. The other two are more competent and therefore they've given you actual numbers. Um, so I, I have no concerns that either company will do it well and go with it for a cost.
Which would be American, I mean, American Pool. So Debbie. Just throwing me this.
You're on mute. Our COVID's really gone.
Well, I keep coughing and I don't wanna cough with all, I don't think that's polite, anyway. Um, I'm okay with, uh, with, with, um, Matt's, Matt's, Matt's proposal, I think we should go with American Pools. Think they know us, they're cheaper, think we, we can count on them. And, um, in this situation, we really need someone we can count on to make sure this pool opens next summer on time. So, it's my two cents.
Thank you, then, Shane?
Agreed.
Very, very easy, okay, so we're all set to have that on the agenda.
So, so. Just one proposal. Just one proposal, right, from American Pool, that's what I heard.
And I'll invite them to the council meeting to answer questions from the council.
Yeah, I mean, first, I find it. Awkward to invite multiple contractors in or like the.
Well, I think to do that, you'd wanna go to executive section.
Okay, cool. I'd like to roll the next two items together. I mean, put it on the consent agenda.
So can I?
Yes, we did do the square and then, shall we do it, oh, yeah.
Let's do it.
You're, now we're in work session, so whatever you want.
That's right, we have to go out of the work session.
No.
Okay, so let's, let's just do it. Let's lock them in for another two years before. So first, I wanna congratulate the, uh. Council members reelect. And so would each of you raise your right hand? And repeat after me, I.
I.
State your name.
State your name. Shannon Robach.
A beautiful one.
Debbie Heller.
Do swear.
Do swear.
You swear.
You can do it all in unison, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution.
Constitution of the United States.
And then I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland, to the state of Maryland.
State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And then I will.
And then I will.
And I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality.
Partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of town council member.
Execute the office of town council member.
Of the town Somerset.
Of the town of Somerset.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations on your election victories and thank you. But I think we, I think we need to. We, I think, let's record.
I think you need a photo op for the, I think you need a photo op for the, for the, um.
So probably, I'll talk to the, I'll talk to the, um.
We'll have to stage it, we'll do a stage.
We'll figure something, okay, okay, turn it back to you, but.
Thank you, thank you for reminding, Robin. I don't think Leslie can remind you, but we keep watching online. I'll take you, Leslie. Uh, putting consent agenda, scheduling the non-adjournary funding and reappointing the town manager and attorney. Any issues, just play that on the consent agenda. I see, September fifth, is that right? Um, the word sports start on September sixth, right, so.
No, the pool is open through September, it's, we're open through the week after Labor Day. So I think, uh, the last day of the pool is Sunday, September tenth, so.
It's Thursday, September seventh, right?
I think they said, I think they said Tuesday, the fifth.
Uh.
Wednesday, when, oh.
It closes right after Labor Day, no?
No. Not this year.
Anyway, it doesn't matter, she told me a different day.
Well, I'll, I'll commit to it, I'll, I'll double check because Wednesday is the sixth, so I, so there was, there was a little bit of confusion on that.
So the town manager will clarify the date. Thank you. Uh, council journal updates, communications board.
So I gave kind of a brief overview, I guess we do have the, uh, the journal, uh. Editor here as well, so I don't know if you wanna invite, um, invite her to. And she, yes, thank you, thank you, yes, absolutely, um. Uh, in essence, this was just. We, we went into a practice where once something was introduced, we would assign a council member to write an article for the journal. And we fell out of that practice, I think in part because. We've now started to do our work sessions on the third Monday of the month, so that's usually after. The, the, uh, the journal articles are due, um. So, um, I think with that in mind, though, the, the, the communications committee and the journal editor, um. Were asking the council to consider ways that we, they, they might, um. Write more articles about upcoming legislation and issues that the council are tackling.
Hey, but I think the journal editor wanted to address the work session. Communications chair.
Madam, madam editor. Madam Chair.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, didn't you, we, we wanted you to give, we wanted to give you an opportunity to, uh, present some of your, um. Suggestions, requests to the council members regarding, um, participation.
Okay, um.
And as publisher, I'm pleased to present.
So as Matt just said, it was for a while, uh, standard practice for the council to submit articles to the journal. Discussing issues and policies and things that were under consideration by the council. And that has stopped for whatever reason, and we would like to re- reinstate it, um. We think it's a great opportunity for the council to provide town residents with information that they might not other have picked up. It's a, it's a way to increase transparency of government. If you folks would, you know, not just. Present either what you're doing or your own opinions about what you're doing. That at the moment, the journal just has a list of council actions and an agenda, if nobody provides any other information. And that's really. A very slim skeletal version of what's going on. That's it for me.
Thank you, Leslie, are you thinking of maybe? Again, or I guess this is a question for, for you and for the council, would it be of interest to have? Council members just write an article on a rotating basis, so there'd be one council member submitting something every month?
It could rotate, it doesn't even necessarily have to be every month, um. I'd leave it up to you, I think hearing more voices would, would be better than just one. So if you could work out a way to rotate it, that would be great. I don't, I don't want people, people to feel obligated to provide something every month when there isn't really something substantial to talk about. Maybe quarterly, I don't know, I'd leave this to you.
Um, okay. Thank you for, uh, for raising the issue and identifying an opportunity, because I think there's a chance for. Uh, the council to. Share some thoughts and, and engage our neighbors. For example, I know. The council has consciously worked on stormwater management over. Good period of time, two to three years. We, we instituted some new, some codes that have started to have an impact on houses. Describing that, that vision and that path and, and asking for feedback might be very useful. Thank you. And I'd be willing to do something like that, but maybe somebody else, but I, I, I think in a number of areas, we would be able to. To, to share individual perspectives of council efforts.
And we've done that before, you know, we've done that with, uh. There was an article describing the changes and setbacks, lots of stormwater coverage, coverage of voting age issue, um. I'm trying to remember, but you know, those kinds of things I think are really, really helpful.
Let's, let's go around and see if there are any other thoughts or comments, Robin?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we should use the journal to, uh, convey, uh, items of moment in the council, is what it will do. Isn't necessarily, particularly when we introduce some, uh, a. Change in. But whatever. It's things that we are in the process of developing ideas and so on, I think. Don't exercising in the journal, so we get feedback early in the process, rather than just to the point that we are changing our code.
That's, that's pretty important. Thank you. Uh, Debbie, have any thoughts or comments?
No, I think it's a really nice idea, if we, if we do something on a regular basis. I, I just think what's, what's been hard for us, I think is to make it happen. You know, and maybe we need to come up with a way where, you know, we, we rotated. And when I first got on the council, I thought that's what we did.
Yeah.
Though we were taking turns.
We did.
And then it kind of slipped away, and, um. So, but if we could make it so it's not onerous, you know, that I don't feel like I have to do it often, I know I'll do my part. Um, and maybe what we really need, need to do is to lay out what's going on, who's best to write about these issues. And to keep it, you know, in the forefront, make it happen. So I think, I think we should do it, as much as I hate to write, I think we should do it. Because Leslie really knows how to edit it, even if you don't write well, so it's okay.
Thank you, Debbie, and Shannon.
Um, yeah, I agree, I think the same, I mean, I'm not really a writer, but, uh, you know, I think that. I think that, um, we could all do that.
Well, one thing that I should point out is like, there's no limit on the participation. By a council member. In, in, in the town journals, so, so. I think that the idea that the committee and the editor is advocating that there be more content from council than there is now. But it doesn't need to be limited either. So, so in the past, like when I was on the council twenty years ago, I wrote a column every month. And, and, I mean, you know. The town government, it's the town government's communication outlet. And, and so, and so, um, we just hope that there's more participation. In, in, in using the journal to communicate, you know, for example. I think it was great that I'm the sixteen-year-old voter, so I think you, you wrote, right? And I think Debbie wrote, and it, it doesn't, there's no limit, you know, so. If that month you, you happen to want to be writing about what the council's doing, because, because. Um, you also don't want it to be that it has to, uh, that a councilor has to write on what the council's doing. Because you might all be doing your own things, you might have your own views on things, might have your own priorities. So I don't think you feel, you have to feel necessary to write what the council is doing, if you don't, you know. There, there, there's no like restrictions on what you're allowed to write, and so. And, and you're a good writer, you know, you, maybe you don't think you are a true good writer. It's just your, your own words are meaningful for your, for your constituents, even if you. And it, and there's no, it doesn't have to be, you know, a treatise. But, but I think it's really nice for our, all of our constituents to, to know our, you know, where we stand and what we're doing. Right, is that sum it up, Leslie?
Thank you very much.
And I do wanna say that we've had, we've been so lucky for the last two decades, so an incredible. Um, uh, group of editors. But, uh, and not stepping on anybody's toes, might be missing, but we do have the finest editor right now. And it's just been a crescendo, and, and we. And, and we, and if you compare our publication to what all these other towns around here are doing, it, you know, we're, we're like Pulitzer Prize winning. Right, right, Leslie?
Uh, if you say so. The one thing I would add here is to remember, the journal is a town publication, it's, it's one of the voices of the town and town government. And so it's, you know, it, it's really appropriate, it's a really appropriate forum for people to share that information.
And I think it's great that the, that the committee is trying to put a little pressure on all of you to shoot, to be less shy about yourselves and because you're all doing great work and, and your constituents need to know that. Because, because our town government is of great value, as you all know. You know, and I, and I, I think it'd be great, I was gonna write a little story on, on the uh, the referendum, maybe you want to write it. Because, because even though I, I didn't think it was a good idea in the beginning, I, I was hoping that you all just have the courage to pass a sixteen-year-old vote. I think the fact that we did have the referendum and, and so many people learned about it, that they wouldn't have if you would just pass it. It was so beneficial, and I hope, and this is like a preview for a future work session, but I hope that maybe every year we'll have some referendum topic on, on, you know, at, at the elections. Because they get people engaged and, and all that. And it also helps all of you to make the important decisions. You know.
It's, you know, I, I mean, I, I think it's important to communicate with the residents, I agree with that, I think the I, I want us to, there are two, two, three things, you know, Leslie, Shannon said she, she doesn't write, my challenge is that, I think at least two council members work, I don't have the bandwidth to go back and forth with an editor and get it to publish level. You know, and, and I'm doing mostly corporate communications, you know, no one's editing my emails. It's just, I'm in that slow. And that back and forth to get a published level is a little tricky for me time-wise. Not commitment to communicating, but just giving the time. And so I just want to lay that out, like that's gonna, that's partly why I have shied away from it. Because I can't engage in that, and then I, I, I'm one of those people, I, it does matter the choice words I'm using. And what I'm saying, I think you've noticed that, Leslie, it's important for me that it's this particular word, because I have given it thought. So I'm less reluctant to kind of edit it. You know, and so that's, that, that's one issue I'll table, the second issue is that I think we should give the town update also equal bill. Uh, partly because I do believe there are more residents reading the town update.
Me, because the Friday.
The Friday, they are reading it. And then residents also forward it on other listservs and on Sarah's listserv and so on, so if we give it equal billing, I thought what we introduced this year, sort of by accident, because of the timelines and the budget process, putting out the budget information, independent of the town journal, was, I think, a good move. You know, so if we can just, and use some, some enrich the town update on the council updates with some color on decision made. So the council voted on this, here was the, you know, almost sort of a mini minutes.
Right.
Version of it, that could go a long way.
Well, well, I, well, I, I think one idea with the new website is that there will be, there will be news posted.
Great.
Because, for example, a lot of towns, yeah, I mean, one thing that we should do, which most towns do in, in Maryland, even the smallest like ours, is when there's an election, the next day, the results are posted on the website. I, I don't know if we did, but I mean, we're in the.
Well, we can, but with the new website, yeah.
Right, but, but, so, so, and, and I think as, as we've talked about, I think we talked about this communication. You know, one day there, the, the website will, the journal will be like, it become like a daily publication.
Yeah.
And whenever you want to post.
Yes.
You'll be able to post.
That would be a great.
And that, that's gonna be.
That will make it fluid, I think, for council, volunteer council members who are working and blah, 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 you know, just make it easy.
And there's no reason why also council members can't put, and, and something in the uh, in that weekly journal. You know, they're all kind of, uh, it's all about getting more information out to the people than, and getting them to read it. But the old model of the town journal being mailed out once a month, doesn't, it, there's only limited readership of that.
It, it, uh, it is limited and it's dwindling.
But luckily we made it so interesting that there's news in there, that's, there's information in there that you can't get anywhere else, that's the best thing.
I agree with that.
And, right, then, I want Matt, Doug, the new website allow that capability of um, updating articles in the journal daily?
Well, it wouldn't be in the journal necessarily, but it does have like a, uh, like, yeah, uh, breaking news or just a, a panel of um, you know, news articles that we can have, so we can constantly kind of churn those out.
Yeah.
I have to come up with protocols for all that, because perhaps that's gonna be something that's controlled by the, the journal editor. If there is in the production process, the website.
Um, Linda and I are transferring over data um, right now. And then we were going to share with the committee. We're, we're gonna finish that this week, so then we share with the committee next week, so that we can get it launched by June first.
But I agree with Leslie that we don't need to explain ourselves more. And I think we kind of order the logistics reasons.
Great discussion, thank you for, I think, gonna see your hand is up, Leslie.
Yeah, just, just a couple of comments. One is, um, Kabir, if you submit something to the journal, I mean, you know that I, that I can be flexible, so I, I'm not gonna require ten backs and fours on an article. Um, and I also listen, I also listen to those who submit from their point of view, and I, you know, I go with it. The other thing I think in the, in the midst of this conversation, the two things. One, I've been informed that the way the journal will appear on the website is as a PDF document. So Matt's right, we won't be able to like, update the journal, journal, we'd have to update, you know, news. Um, and finally, I think the idea of expanding Matt's article in the journal, the um, manager's corner. The advantage of having the town council provide informations that you guys are elected officials. And it gives your constituents a chance to see how you feel and how you think about issues of substance. Matt can provide a summary, but you folks are the elected ones. And I think, I think that's an important distinction.
Fair enough.
I'm done.
Thank you, Leslie, thank you very much. Okay. I think this is a topic, maybe we should be, actually revisit as a regular work session agenda item, just sort of. And he's, I agree with that. Okay, um, how Olympics?
Yeah, so I don't, unfortunately don't have a very detailed description, so.
One question.
Sure. I don't think, I don't know, Councilmember Heller is the, is there a council race uh, on the slate? I don't, I don't think so. I, I think it's, it's a uh, Councilmember Heller might have a better description. I, 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 I asked, I think there's two committee members on the pool committee who are kind of the point people on this.
Debbie, need to unmute.
Um, but I think in general, it's, it's a very low-cost event, but we wanted to have a motion to specifically earmark that day for.
You know. No, man, I don't know how low-cost it really is. When, you know, were you on the pool committee the other night?
I didn't make the meeting, no.
Okay, no, they, they, they have a very, um, it, it, it's, it's a very ambitious, wonderful event. You know, um, it's gonna be very inclusive and should be lots of fun. Um, but they're really, they're working out the pieces of it and the cost of it. And um, I think now that we are charging um, to stroke people, stroke and churn people, I was saying people that have strokes um, to swim, and I think our budget, we have a two thousand dollar budget for the um, for the pool committee, and I think that they'll, they could use a lot of it for this. Um, and it, it, the, the people running it are Russell Green and Walt Whalen. And um, I don't have in front of me, because they, they put it up, you know, on, you know, we kind of, they shared their screen with all the events. But um, I think we can have a special event just for the council. So uh, Jeffrey, you're gonna have to.
Wait, what? Is that your idea here? No, I'm saying that we don't want any special events.
I'm sorry.
Only the town hall.
I, I really think what it is, is we'll just have the council men compete. Shannon, we are off the hook, don't you worry.
Perfect.
Ron, you're gonna have to join them. Anyway, it'll be a great event, but what it's all gonna cost, I really couldn't tell you right now.
Okay, so I, maybe a better, better way of saying it is that the plan is to keep it within the allocated budget that the, that the pool committee has for.
Well, but when it's voted on, it has.
Yes, that's what, that's what I, I, I think I written that in the write-up, is that when when it's on the agenda on June, we'll have a more comprehensive write-up for the council.
We will, that, that, by then they will have really, um, probably, um, you know, have it all down straight. You know, there were a lot of events, I don't think they can pull off all the ones they were talking about. Um, and then they should have their budget clear by then too. So we can tell them, though, we need to keep it within the, within their allotted budget. I'll tell them that.
And I believe this is the second year. Correct, everything?
They never, it never happens.
It never, it, it was proposed previously.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Right, it never happened, exactly, but this is gonna happen.
But, but I think you also have to make sure that it's clear what is the accessibility of the pool during that time for non-participants. Because that's where you get into an issue.
That's a good point.
Make sure that someone doesn't show up there and say, I wanna go swimming, well, no, there are luchas going on. You have to make sure that.
You know, Jeffrey.
We have to make sure, you know, with all these things, with all these things with the pool, you have to make sure that everyone's given proper notice and their rights are protected, because you know how they are.
Everybody will be given notice, but you know, we really limit access for swim meets. We limit access for water aerobics.
That's why all of it, that's why, that's why all of that has to be.
But it will be.
Actually, speaking of, on the last agenda item, it might make sense to have them write something you know, in the next day or two for the journal, because it's proposed to happen at the end of June.
Yes, they should.
Okay, I'll, when I hang up from this, I'll write them a note that, saying that we have to have a journal article on this. And um, they have to stay within the budget, how's that? And they have to communicate, got it.
But we can have it on your agenda, right? Yes.
Yes.
First, as the mayor said, we really need to have a firm estimate. Yeah, it might still be rough, but we need to have a dollar amount that we can improve.
Right.
Whatever.
Okay, since only Shannon and Debbie are above us.
I don't think that they would need to use a whole pool.
What is the admission fee to register for the Olympics gonna be? Eight dollars?
Nine.
Eight dollars, right?
And will, will the, will the cost be covered by the admission being? Yeah, you better ask other questions.
Those questions are directed at me, it's okay.
We're, we're, we're moving on. Focus people, River Road Planting.
Um, so this was kind of a concept for the council to then move forward to the June agenda. The idea here is that if, if you like what this is, I've also shared with the PNRC folks. Um, at the June Agenda, Kelly can, can join us and we can then purchase the, the bulbs and plants that we need in the allotted budget that we have for it. Um, but in general, the idea is to spruce up the River Road entrance this spring, we can get that done, it might need a little bit of extra attention and water. Um, but that one has a pretty good structure in place, so it's really just a matter of getting some new plants in there and, and kind of using what already exists.
Which is in the budget.
Which is, which is in the budget. Then in the fall, we would then pivot towards the Cumberland Avenue, Wisconsin entrance here, and then more prominently, the uh, Little Falls Parkway, which needs more work and that she's working a little bit, uh, uh, takes a little bit more, more work in terms of putting together a concept plan and options for the council.
And I think the idea, remember, this is one of my uh, sort of initiatives. And I think that the idea was that I, I asked the council whether they're interested in future addressing the disgrace of each entrance, and you all agree, and I think my idea is that this year we, we don't have anything in the budget, I think.
We do, we do in, in the budget this year as well.
But we, I don't think, we might not have enough for um, for example, the Little Falls entrance. Which, which um, she has, you know, we walked around the town, as I think we mentioned a couple of months ago, and I, I think that the Little Falls entrance might need more funding than what's in the budget. But, but it would, it would be my hope that this year the council will agree on what the plan is and then fund it for the following year. Because at the Little Falls entrance, you know, there's that, that horrible um, you know, that big metal thing which might have to be, which hopefully she's gonna recommend moving or covering in some way. And, and then that sign uh, might, you, you might want to replace the sign and all that. And then, and there's more entrances, you know, there's, there's this entrance over here. Which has no, nobody knows when they're coming in Somerset there. And there's also, so there are really six entrances to the town. Because there's this, this, that river, and also the entrance of the path, the Orange Shaw path. It doesn't say welcome to Somerset. That's true. So, so it'll be up to you, you know, these design things get very, it's hard to agree on design, so, so anyway. So I think it'll take a year to come to an agreement. But I think it's very important, which you all, it's, it's sensitive.
I agree.
I do, yes.
Right, uh, so, I mean.
So what do we need?
Do we need action on this item, like moving to do, or what?
Yeah, I think if, if you agree, then we can move this to the June Agenda and I'll come back to you. Kelly will, will be able to present a plan and to, you'll be able to approve it with the budget.
Question. Matt, did you run it by PNRC, because they've been on this at least for the two years.
I.
I suspect this has been an issue longer than two years.
I did, uh, I did email the PNRC with.
But Kristen is no longer on, but that was one.
Yes, yeah, I, I, I mailed Josh and, and uh, the committee on.
If I remember correctly, they had some vision for this, which was like that each entrance speaks to the, a different part of the town and I think, but maybe that's a harder thing to utilize.
I know that that was all look the same. I know that that was something that we talked about a little bit, I think that this this was, they're, they're, the kind of unifying idea is that we would get rid of non-native plants and base of plants.
PNRC was on native plants, because the entrances at the moment have, well, the ones that haven't been yet changed have a lot of non-native plants.
Right.
Got it, got it, and, and it's both, it's soft, it's kind of hard.
This, that's part of why she recommended this one that we take care of now, because this one is really just soft. It's just, just the plants and, and taking out the bad stuff, putting in new stuff and.
They don't need a new sign.
We don't need a new sign there, this one just needs to be kind of judged a little bit.
What does it need to?
Judge.
He's good. All right.
Okay.
Okay, and it's, you think it'll be survive, and it's already late.
It's a little late, um, but in talking to her, she felt like we could, we could do this one, we can squeeze this one in, um, just give it a little bit extra attention.
Okay, Mr. President, I wanted to say one more. Yes. So, um, going back to the, this, well, I guess we're selling the river planting. You know, by the way, when we were walking around town, we discovered an entrance that people haven't paid any attention to, which is the, the entrance, do you know which one it is?
The Bible place?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, correct. The part of my daily life.
So that, that needs to be uh, dealt with and protected. Because you know that bamboo, uh, there's the whole group that they want to keep it there and. And there's no authority, I mean, the town can just come in and just take it all down.
Who's maintaining it?
We, we. Our responsibility.
It's not up.
We haven't been, no.
Because it's the same, oh, really? Interesting. Because it's the same wood chips as the Murrishaw.
And maybe they are, but that, that's still in the tent, that's still, I mean, we need to have, we need to look.
It's definitely the town. Let's say I asked, when Doug Calumby visited us a few years ago, I asked him directly that question, which is. Bamboo is a highly invasive plant. Um, and is there something else that could provide a screen there, the way the bamboo provides a screen that is a native plant? He said, there are some very fast-growing trees that can do that job. So I wouldn't say that we, um, replace bamboo and plant trees, but we might want to plant trees while the bamboo is there. And if they provide a screen, then.
Well, that's something that Kelly will, that's for the future, because thinking, because Kelly is aware of that.
There's your own questions. But I'm excited to report on this. Just. Oh, thank you for the mission there. Okay, shred event. I think you were saying that.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So before he presents, I think that we need to review. The history and, and our resident town attorney.
Can I just say though, before you do that, so Phyllis is already planning a shred event at Concord Hill parking lot, so it's not looking. I don't think, I think she's moved it. I saw it advertised.
So she's gonna do, so she's gonna do that, then we, we don't need to.
Yeah.
Cause, cause she's probably gonna advertise her.
Yeah.
So I was gonna, the town attorney, talk about the ethical issues related to what's happened in the past.
Yeah, I don't think she's gonna come and request it from us, because I, I saw her mailing for Concord Hill.
Okay.
So then the question is, yeah. If we're, if we're good with that serving our residents, or if the expectation is that there is one in Somerset and we want to continue and do it town-sponsored.
Having a shred event organized by the town is an excellent idea, and we should. Charge Environment Committee was expanding it to cover more things. Um, basically, these things go to the Shitty Brook Transfer Station, and they have been expanding the kind of thing they will take. It ain't mattresses now, by the way.
I, I agree with the problem, I, you reminded me that I was there last year, and it was really popular, and people. I mean, there was a traffic jam. People were trying to get in here to shred, I was surprised.
Yeah, the main problem was traffic jam, yes.
Yeah, but it was, that is a reflection that people like it, and. And there was not only that, but there was a battery recycling bed, there was lights, it was, it was very nice, actually, there were EV, we had EV cars. It turned out to be a very good event for the town, so just to put that on the table for everyone, sort of. I, I mean, we call it Phyllis's event, but actually it was more than that.
It was much more, yeah, I know, but the problem was just that, basically, she advertised it commercially. To get more business for itself and use it, and we still.
Which is really.
Other thing is, who can we go if outside the pools even in pool parking lot?
Well, well, uh, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, the. Yeah, the only reason I had recommended it now is because she usually schedules it in June, so I figured we'd wanna get out, but there's no rush now, we could do it in. October.
I ended up being one of the traffic.
Yes, you are.
So you, you need volunteers. You need volunteers, you can do it.
So like we do for Halloween. Okay. So I think the main issue is, do you want to request to the Environment Committee to come up with a? Yeah, it's the recommendation, yeah.
Great, so it's not on the June Agenda and anything, but we'll bounce.
Instructive notice to council and neighbors. This has to do with the. Permit applications. Notification of neighbors and. And town protocol, if things need to be. Firefied, um. And, and there seems some confusion about, do we just? Can we just email all neighbors, or is there a threshold that if there's a variation being requested, do we need to rebook? Do we need to get signatures?
I think what Matt's saying is that. To take it out of the application process and application and how's the town.
Right, and that's another case. Yes, why, why don't you first have the, the town attorney say what the code says about this notice? Because, you know, it's a good idea historically, but I don't think most of the residents understand what it is. Most of them think that it is an approval. But I will let the town attorney review what you have to say.
Sure, so if someone is requesting a building permit. The application and the code provide that the applicant must have the neighbors sign. The neighbor signature sheet, the neighbor signature sheet is meant to give the neighbors an opportunity to review the plans. And pose any questions they have to the applicant. Early on in the process, and if the applicant cannot obtain those signatures, the code requires the applicant to provide. A certification as to their efforts to obtain the neighbor's signatures. If someone needs a variance, the code provides that the town is going to post the property and send notice. To the adjoining and confronting neighbors. So, you know, in a nutshell, right now, town sends notice for variances, but not for ordinary building permit applications. The town really relies on the applicant to let the neighbors know about a standard building permit application.
And, and the policy behind that a hundred years ago was that it's a nice way for a neighbor to come and say. I'm, I'm tearing down my house and building a mansion, and I want you to know about it. And to, to facilitate conversation. And so that was fine a hundred years ago, but now who, you, you, you're gonna knock on your door, you don't know who it is. And, 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 and then if they come and say, oh, I'm gonna tear down this house, and you're like totally appalled, you're, you're not gonna wanna ask them questions, you wanna say, get the hell out of here.
Right, murder mystery, which I love this.
So, so, so it, it, you know, it was nice years ago, and no other, I don't think any of your other clients require this, right, mister?
That's right, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so it was, it was a lovely thing, a notice thing years ago. But what it's turned into is, you know, they come to the door, I'm tearing down my house, I'm building this huge mansion. And then the person at the door thinks that they are being requested to sign it to say that they approve it.
Right. Yeah.
And so it's been, it's been, you know, it's outdated.
I, I think.
Yeah.
At the Shannon, you go for Shannon, then me.
Well, I was just gonna say that, I think that, so I, I don't think that people are doing that anymore, and for the most part, because like, we'll see. There's emails that have reached out, but we don't ever see any more signatures, like when those come through on the building things. And I think that, um, you know, from, because I'm getting a lot of questions about, um. You know, some of these houses that are being sold in the neighborhood and stuff, and like, for me. Um, I feel like we really need to have the, the agenda, like by the fifteenth. You know, you're supposed to have. Done your application to be on the town council meeting for the following month. And so on that fifteenth, when we know what houses are gonna be up for that town council meeting. I feel like we have to send that out immediately, that so that the public knows. That this is coming up, because otherwise, if they wait for the agenda for the town council meeting, you know, sometimes it comes like two nights before. And there's not enough time then for them to do any sort of due diligence, and. Um, so I feel strongly that we need a better notification system of, and I would like to know too. Who's gonna be on the, what houses are gonna be on the, um. On the council meetings, and since we have a, a strict deadline of the fifteen, we should know by that point, that's my opinion on it.
I, um, I, I wanna say that I think it's very important that we do change this system somewhat. That we do have a notification from, from the town. I think that will standardize it, and there'll be no, um, you know, there'll be no one to say, no. Because you, we've sent an official's, um, notice, but I also think we should stick with the other part of it, where neighbors have to walk around and talk to each other. I think it's important, I, I don't, you know, it just, it gets people to meet one another. And to ask questions, so I don't know that I would give up that other part of it, so this is where I am.
I mean, when we, when it happened with like, with my neighbors, we all got an email from the builder. That said, here are my plans, and that was great to have, because we had his whole set of plans, and like, we didn't really sign anything, because it was COVID. But we did get an email, um, with that information.
Yeah, what the, what you're saying is, is sort of exactly what I was envisioning is that, you know, we, we, we have the deadline of the fifteenth. So then on the sixteenth, I can meet with Doug and make sure that we have it. And send out a notification to all of the adjoining and budding properties in the council that says. You know, so-and-so has applied for X, Y, and Z at such-and-such property. Attached is, are the, are the proposed plans, if you have questions or wanna see, uh, you know, full set of full-size plans. Please contact the town hall at such-and-such, or contact the applicant at, you know, this number, whatever.
Or, I mean, maybe, maybe that's too hard to like go and try to like figure out who lives next door and all that, I mean. What if we just sent out like a town of Somerset on the sixteenth, like, hey, town. These are the houses that, or you know, these are the applications that were received for the meeting in June. And if you would like more information, please follow up with Matt, because I know that there are a lot of people. Um, you know, like the tree, the, you know, tree people that don't necessarily live on any side of the house that's being constructed. But they wanna know about it too, because they're concerned about a particular tree or whatnot, you know, so it doesn't really just, it limit, I think. To the exact adjoining neighbors, I think everyone in town actually has an opinion and feelings for it.
So another problem, this is really to Councilor Heller. So. Uh, I mean, as, as Councilor Rubik is saying, the way the law is right now, it's limited. It's who you're supposed to, uh, announce, it's a notice, and maybe it should be expanded, it could be easily done if, if. If the town's, I mean, the second thing is, what happens if all your neighbors are renters? Or what happens if your neighbors are never there, or there are kids there, you don't know who the owner is, I mean, it's just. It, it's not fair to the applicant, that is a huge burden on the applicant. That they have to go and walk and get a signature somewhere, that, that's, that, that isn't fair, especially with. The way, you know, crime is today and everything else, it's not fair.
I don't think we know each other, you know, Jeffrey, do we know everybody? No. But I think we all know who lives in front of us and behind us.
No, not, you can't assume that.
I think I can, I think most of us know.
Developers don't know who lives next door.
You think what?
The developers don't know really who lives next door.
Well, they don't know, well, then they gotta knock on your door, you know, I, I just, I, I'm not gonna follow my sword on this, I just think it's something that's important. But as long as the town is giving notice, so be it, but I like, I wa, I would like a dual approach, but. You know, again, I'm not gonna follow my sword.
Yeah, and, well, I. We're not just talking about building permits, there are tree permits, there are air conditioning permits, I, I don't know how many other permits we have, but point is that if we change it for one. We should change it for all of them, and that's, that's all I'm saying.
That's, that's a point, I just wanted to clarify, so we would announce that there is an application. Right, like we do for variants, we announce that there's an application.
Yeah, uh, for a variance, we, we basically have a, a template. Message that goes out to the adjoining abutting properties.
That this is coming up for a variance hearing.
Exactly, yeah.
So for non-variance hearing, that's what we're talking about, we would say this is coming up for a non-variance. As in clarifying that this application is within code, we wouldn't be just saying, here's an application. We'll be saying, we have reviewed it, it is within code, it's coming for here.
Yes, yeah.
Just to be clear, because I think that would matter.
Yeah.
I think because we would want the town to know that, that this is in code.
Right, right.
That people can weigh in, but that it is within code, within application, because we do have invested time, go ahead, Ron.
I, I just think, and that puts Matt under a pretty heavy deadline.
That's what I'm wondering, that's, yeah, that is the challenge, is that, you know, they might submit on the fifteenth. They, they say they don't need a variance, but Doug may, over the course of his review. Realize, actually, you need to change X, Y, and Z.
I'll surface what man like, but concern here is that we may invite conflict where there might not be. And one of the benefits of saying, we've reviewed it technically, and it is within code. Then it might minimize that in our town, and I think that's an important distinction. So I'm, I'm reluctant sort of saying, here's all the stuff that's up, because it might actually pull us into a lot of. Issues we will need to resolve, some of which may not mean anything in the.
Yeah, well, perhaps the notice could say. The applicant has filed a building permit application, and the applicant represents that no variances are required. We don't.
That would be, yes, that would be.
In there that it's by email, then they should be required to respond, acknowledge that they got the email.
No, what, this is for town-wide, Shannon's suggestion, for a town-wide.
Yeah, I understand, but don't you think that, that for the, whoever it's gonna be? The, the, whatever neighbors it's gonna be, that there should be requirement that, that they got it, that you get it. Notification, they got it.
That's a different question, that's a different question, I think that could be just as strong as Matt, just trying to get signatures.
Yeah.
Sorry, we, we, I think we, the, what, what I was building on was Shannon's suggestion, that let's do a town-wide email.
Yes.
Which I think is a great idea, I was only saying it might be good to sort of say it's.
But.
As Ron suggested, that it's applied for non-variance, which most likely is.
Okay, but don't you think that. They're really good discussion, but the problem with the town-wide email is that there's no guarantee anybody's gonna read it. And remember, there's a whole science to communication, and if, and if you get too many, you don't read any, and so. So, I, I mean, I really like, like Debbie suggested, that we, we. Attack all the, do all these, there's no reason we can't do all these things.
But what, what's wrong with all of them, I'm clear. You're sorry for the people that know. And now we are telling them, and if they don't read it.
But, but I think that, um, I mean, for, I mean, I think that the email can simply be what the agenda is for the town meeting. You know, and have it included, because we just, we don't get the agenda until like right before.
That's a, I mean, I learned about what's on, on a for hearing.
Right, well, like.
A Friday or the Thursday before.
When people send out emails and they say they think that something's up and it's not, and who knows, and, you know, so, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a call-out for these residences. It could be more just on the sixteenth, this is when we set the agenda for the meeting on.
I agree with you.
And that includes these houses that.
These are the, these are the hearings slated for the next town.
Right, right.
These are various, these are applicant, as Ron's language, apply for non-variance.
And it could be also, and we're gonna talk about the pool and the fee and like whatever, you know.
Yes.
All the things.
I mean. But it comes much later.
Yeah, I mean, the. They're, they're kind of, I mean, they're, they're related, but I guess I was thinking of two di, two different things. One was notification, because the, the neighbors have the greatest stake in what is happening next door to them, and that's, that's part of. The reason why we, it, that's, that's presumably why we have the name.
Of the existing law.
Right. Yes, yes, town-wide, there, the issues might affect people town-wide, but I guess I was thinking two different buckets, one is. On the sixteen, a, a standard email could go to adjoining, abutting property and the council that says. This has been applied to, this is the hearing date, these are, the, this is a PDF of the plans. If you want, contact the town hall, and here's the contact information for the builder. In addition to that, you know, even if it's in the Friday announcements that follows the fifteenth, I could just say.
That would be great, yeah.
Following building permits have been submitted, uh, to the town hall this month.
I think that it just, you know, because I mean, maybe, maybe it's simply like that, we, maybe we move the deadline back for those building permits, and so by the fifteenth then. We'll know, like, maybe the, maybe the, um. Maybe it should be at the first of the month, you need to get it for the following month, because I. Maybe it should be at the first of the month, you need to get it for the following month, because I know that there are. A lot of people that, you know, are concerned, you know, or or want to pay attention to what's going on with these houses. And it does take a considerable amount of time to try to like. Figure out like, what do I need to do in order for, you know, me? To like, do I need to contact a lawyer or like myself? You know, there's a lot of stuff that goes on, and so to have a one month, like. You know, period where people are able to kind of think about what's going through, review the plans, like if they have questions, maybe reach out to the builder. Like those kind of things, like maybe.
This is a separate issue. You're saying, yeah, for the neighbors, the first bucket. Even if you do get it out by the sixteen, that might be too short notice. Right, and so we are fixing, we are proving from what it is now, but we're not fixing the time issue.
We're but the neighbors get earlier notice now because it's part of the application process.
Right.
Um so in fact, this is gonna be later notice to the neighbors if we do it this way.
Ah.
Point to make.
Ah, so.
When do you think that the neighbors get the notification then?
For variants.
Well, it's when everything read the email that goes out from the developer. Yeah, um but it's certainly before they submit their application, because those emails have to be submitted with the.
Because the their emails have been part of the application package.
But what about just for a building permit?
That's what we're talking about.
For a building permit.
For a building permit, they've got to include the that they contacted.
That they've done this, yeah.
So that happens before the permit is submitted.
So we are, we are, we are saying we won't change that. We still want that to happen. That's what I'm hearing.
I know.
And we're staying on top of that on the sixteen, the town itself will send a notice. And then we're saying there'll be a third thing, which is that Friday, there will be a notice. A town wide.
I think what Matt's saying is, and in fact, you might want to think about this. Is that. We take out the requirement that the applicant notify the neighbors. And instead, the town notifies the neighbors when the permit is submitted. But the problem with that, and you're identifying, is that means it's later notice to.
But there's another problem with that, and I like Ron's opinion of it. I wouldn't want us to be the only ones notifying the neighbors. I don't think. We should, because for some reason. We don't get it out on the sixty. For whatever reason, we have a three hundred, you know, we have some problems in the town, you're super stretched out. I just don't want then that then that to be a basis for litigation. That, hey, you know, you guys didn't tell us, you are responsible by the code. Tell us, I would not want that.
Why don't you ask Ron? That's a question.
I don't mind overkill, but I don't want it to be completely honest.
Ron, can you um address um Councilor? Who is um?
Sure, yeah, I would I would say that is. Purely a political question, whether the town should give. Notice in addition to requiring the applicant to give notice. In my experience. It's rare to have the to have the applicant give the notice. It is common in my experience for the applicant to have to provide a list. Of the adjoining and confronting neighbors for a variance. Uh at the county and at the the municipal level, but. I I believe the town is the only one that has the applicant give notice of a a permit application. Typically, typically, towns do not give notice of standard building permit applications. Because. They're reviewed administratively and there's, you know, no need for a hearing.
See, that's one of the unique aspects of our review, and it. Increases citizen engagement. Which I think is a hallmark of Somerset.
There are other words for that phrase. This is why I think we should put anything that is within code on the consent agenda. Because we our hands are very tired, because there is a code. You know, and we spend a lot of time typing the code.
But but Ron says we can't do that.
Yeah. And it's it's also, I mean, if you listen to what happened at the last one, you see why it can't be on the consent agenda, because in fact, we did modify the. Tree plan during the meeting in response to comments from a neighbor.
No, we will always do that. We can always pull things from a consent agenda. We can. We ask, we ask, is this agenda approved? If there are truly a three, you know, a hundred page email from a resident. You know, in this case, there was a true commitment from there and to sort of say, these changes we would like to see. We took the time, we made the changes. We would always do that. All I'm saying is that I think. We shouldn't go in the other direction of further seeding conflict. On these issues in our town. That's what I'm worried about. I understand we're trying to balance interests, but I worry about that. And I think I'm worried that this direct this conversation takes us in that. In that direction. I'm not hearing.
Well, yeah, I I I my my intent in bringing it up was that we would standardize. How people are getting notified. And I I even I even made your point that. If it if it works, if people get this, we we standardize how people are notified. We remove this requirement from the code that that I I won't read it, because it's there in front of you. That that could open up and give us flexibility in the future that we could review our our hearing process. And the council, the council could move non-variance applications to the consent agenda. If no objections or comments uh for the hearing are received by a certain date. That's not my recommendation at this time.
But is that a but is that a lot?
But if if I cut it, this has been a great discussion. It has. wandered all over the place into lots of excellent ideas for improvements to the way the town does business.
We have another discussion.
So I think we're gonna have to discuss this more. In terms of the specific request. Or or the impetus for this was the difference between. No. Difference between houses that had a various request and did not have a various request. Regarding some notification of neighbors. So on that specific item. I actually don't hear a consensus on how we should change them, so I I think that.
For future discussion.
I think that'll be a pretty good question.
I think we we it was a good discussion. We can have, we probably need just one more. I think we're very close to some pieces here, yeah.
I think so, I.
Like, I personally would like to know what houses are going up, like.
I think that is solvable. So that piece is actually solvable.
So exactly, so so.
The one update is solved.
Right, so so the one item that was raised here. That that I recommend we we implement. As town process, or does it's not a code change? It's just. A Friday after the fifteenth of any month. If there are, if any go, if any permit applications have been received. For buildings, HVACs, tree removals, anything. Just put a list in, just put a list in that Friday.
It's gonna be in a public hearing, yeah.
Oh, in the Friday. Yeah, I think the town just sent info.
I think that's reasonable.
No statements about what.
And said and said to each council member.
Right, but I but I would say that like, so I mean, today is the fifteenth. And so that would be Friday, the nineteenth. And our meeting is like two weeks, I guess, after that. So like, I have some a neighbor. Who keeps asking me if a house is gonna be on. The, you know, agenda. And they're very invested in it, and you know, they really want to be prepared and. You know, and so and I don't know the answer to the question, but I all, you know, the nineteenth might be. Too late, like, I mean, it's not too late, but it's just, it's another.
But in that instance, you can ask Matt. You can't, like, I've done, I've asked Matt, hey, I'm I've heard.
You do every day, send an email about it every day.
But he doesn't, if he doesn't know, then he doesn't know.
No, but by the fifteenth, he would know, because that's when the the. That's when the deadlines are due, and so I start stalking him, and I'm like, what house?
Alright, alright.
So and that's like another, it takes away from him to step down to me and answer me and like, you know, all the stuff, but like.
So you're saying on the sixteen, you should send it up.
Yeah, I mean.
Next business day, send out an update to the town with all permits received.
Is that doable, Matt, or is that a hard turnaround?
Well, it is a hard turnaround. I I think maybe a better way to solve that issue is to just give to just create a Google. Sheet that becomes the monthly sheet that has the building permits and give you access to it. So it's either. Then you you can log in to that document and see. Nope, it's not on there, or it, yes, it is.
Not for me, it's just for everyone, because whereas this person who keeps asking me. There's other people that want to know too.
Shannon's saying she doesn't want to be in the middle of that. I see. She wants the town to know.
Well, no, I.
As soon as we know.
Fair. The town to know.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
Either that or.
Yes, I I. Can you give us a time when you can get about? You decide what works. We are basically in the sooner the better, right? That's the bottom line. But maybe we bring this back.
Yeah, I I I'd like to think about it, because I I worry about what we talked about inviting conflict, and I also. Worry about what the mayor said is just inundating people with, you know, I I'm not, I don't know. I I like to think about it. Well, I mean, I already sent an email out on Fri- Friday. I I I.
So as as a first step, we implemented fine, then we'll see what the feedback is. Some people might say that's not, that's not good enough.
Uh uh and your feedback will be the most important.
They like it.
Well, we maybe.
Your feedback, right.
Why don't we do one more discussion of this?
I.
So you can. Figure out what's a good timeline.
Or or and just up for debate. I mean, we can think about it, everyone think about it. Or we potentially set the deadline for the June meeting or whatever meeting it is, earlier than the fifteenth.
Of that previous month.
Of the previous month, so that by the fifteenth. We know, you know, what's gonna be on it, because we've cleared it through Doug. You know, my my. My feeling, and I don't know how accurate it is, is that like, some people might wait until your deadline and then send it through. And then we're scrambling to try to like coordinate with Doug and this and that, you know, to to make sure that it can be properly on the agenda. If people wait till the last minute, maybe we move it back a week.
Uh can we put this all, no, I think that's a great. I think that's a great, I I let's put this entire process on discussion for next. Uh at the top of the.
That means.
At the end of it.
Yeah.
No changes. I think we can read, we can do one more session.
Yeah, I I.
There'll be several sub-items here. Great. Great discussion. Alright, thank you. But I'd like, seeing as this is almost seven fifteen. Like to skip past a couple of items and go to the lights. In case that's.
You mean skip the item that says, I'm stopping.
I'm smooth. Well, I'm trying to make sure we don't have, we can have a spot.
Don't stop the landing.
So um actually, I I was having a conversation uh offline um before the meeting started. Uh Pepco. Moved the streetlights today, so these new locations, they're up, so we can announce that also, you know, you you all can take a look at them. Um then. The the question kind of there is a is a process question that I think the council president, you know, you 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 had raised in terms of. How do we want to get feedback from either committees or residents? How do we want to incorporate that? Does the count, how long does it? Stay up and how, what's the council's mechanism for making a decision ultimately?
I have an answer. I think we should. We we, since it's up now. We should all take this week, if we can, to really go visit those. You should let let us know ASAP. What those locations are.
Yes, they're.
They are there, sorry. So we should go and look at, you know. Corner of Dorset and Warwick, corner of Cumberland and Surrey, four eight two three Dorset, five seven zero seven, sorry. And let you know by the end of this week. Where we are on this, right? Because then we need it to be part of the agenda for the next council meeting. That could be one way we do it. The other way is I'm willing to come back to a special discussion just online.
We don't need to look at them. This week for being on the agenda.
No, well, for us to be informed. Because I think what we want, we need to tell Matt is. What wattage? Wattage?
Yeah.
Do we want?
Right, the residents also would need another chant, I too.
The residents also need to weigh in. Do you want to do another survey? That would be a site. Because that, I think. You know. Will depend on level of participation. If there are just more, that's my concern. I feel. It's on us to go and talk to residents, look at the lights ourselves, bring that back into, you know, making a vote as a council.
Right. Um. From a. Process, so. I think you're right. I I think it's, it's on us as the council. And. So. My my preference would be. Not to have further delay for another survey. We've done one survey, there's small turnout. So be it. From a process standpoint, I think that there are two town committees that have a. Okay, that have. That that could reasonably have input into this. The Public Safety Committee and the Environment Committee. So. And I I know, talking to to Shannon. With Public Safety and had a you know, department about. Environment committee. Recommendations.
Okay, so give them a chance to weigh in.
Right, okay, and then we just.
Make a call.
We can discuss those inputs. The other thought to sh- that I want to share here is. Original purpose of this effort, post a long going effort, it doesn't bind us to it. The original purpose was just to. Replace the existing light bulbs with LED bulbs. Of the same. That's the same.
Yeah.
Same effective wattage.
I mean.
Well, I.
I think that's.
According.
Yeah, I think a lot.
I think that's one. One part of the story, that's one part of the story. I think that has been genuine public safety concerns. We are very dark parts of the town.
Yeah.
So and we we are, we actually got support for the LED lights. Because we were saying we can solve part of the public safety question. So that's not the side of that, yeah.
Remember when this started, it was because, and Robin knows, it's better than I do. The the sodium whatever was outlawed. Uh it's mercury vapor, mercury vapor, and then they were gonna give us the sodium, we're like, no, we want something modern. So then that's when it also, and there are a lot of people in the town that wish we had no lights. Because when they're anti-light. Few people. There are lights, they're anti, they're anti-light.
Prolific.
L LED lights by and large are.
No, you're not. You don't need to defend. Yeah, so hold on, the LED.
I mean, somebody can write a PhD thesis.
But but so, but how do we do this? So we will all review again these new locations. How should we feed it back into our process? Do we just bring it? Into a council, into the council meeting? And just hash out how many, one wattage, one mini another? Or go street by street? Like, how do we?
I mean, what what Matt's saying is that we could, for example, have seventy watt streetlights in Dorset and fifty watt streetlights in the other one, because Dorset is the big. Cover up for us that are. Major street.
Okay, so we come in and we weigh, we send Matt our views, we or we send collectively our views over email. And then he is informed to bring a proposal to the government. I think we have to do one of those too.
Because it's. Was is is there something, Mr. Mayor, that? Because it means that we're constrained in communicating, or it's just sort of like, we're just excited.
I I know, I think you should. Ask the town attorney.
Mister Town Attorney, how can the council uh? Discuss this and not violate anything?
And none. Mister Mayor.
How can they? Talk amongst themselves outside of an open meeting? On this topic? Does it have to be just two of them or?
Less than a quorum. Ye- yes, Mister Mayor.
So it means that applies. So so means we can provide our inputs directly to Matt and Matt can. Consolidate. He can probably produce a little table that says. You know. Pretty of the council members recommend fifty watts here, seventy-five at the quarters, whatever.
We we can give our input to him.
They can.
And Matt, if it's not onerous, you can send. Like the final proposal that we were brought on. And say, this is.
Based on.
Based on the feedback, this is what I got. If you were still opposed to this. Please, please let it.
But you might want to put it in a referendum next year.
Oh my gosh, I don't want to wait another year.
Yeah.
No, that's that's the idea.
Then you have eight.
It's incentivizing us.
They can get eight different options, and then like one will get twelve percent.
It's a seven.
So yeah, so you have this. To be clear, that that be. Then it's. It's funny, the idea is that the council can weigh in.
Waited.
And.
We have waited.
Unless there's, unless there's. You know.
This, yeah.
Unless there's a a a request for a a broader discussion, that I would then administratively. Approve the.
With, no, no.
No, you would make a recommendation.
I have.
It's hard to vote on.
I have an idea. Rank choice voting.
No, no.
Rank choice voting. The ranked choice voting amongst the five of you.
Listen, this is a very important issue.
I guess why I think.
But it's not that.
Now, we, I'm just wondering if it might be more useful for you to. Hold in inputs, if you send out a. A, a table or a form or a question there. To each of the council members, make it very clear what input you need from us. Otherwise, you might get all sorts of different type of.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would just say, you know, uh, basically what I would do is. They're kind of binary choices on intersections and straightaways. So it's which do you prefer in intersections, which do you prefer at straightaways? And then I'll give you an opportunity to make comments or notes, because you might say, generally, I like one hundred watt, but I do think there's a few intersections where.
Exactly, that's what we need to give them, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Like, deal.
Yeah, so we will, like, that is one, uh, strong candidate, or slightly better.
Because it's cut off many of the lives.
Door set with all those trees.
So we, maybe, I, I suspect we will arrive at consent.
Or. Or. A recommendation without further discussions. And there might be some minor disagreements, and then we can talk about those minor disagreements.
And we don't want, we want to.
Right, yeah. All right. And so, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not trying to slow us down, but, and the idea is for it to be on the June agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, there are two items left, left. We got like eight minutes, we might be able. Hard stop the council meeting, this was my idea to. Fortunately, in, in recent years, we've generally completed council meetings. And in more or less reasonable time, it might have run past. Nine or nine thirty, but they haven't gone to like eleven o'clock.
But wicked old years, they did.
Okay, did. And I'm just, in, 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 maybe, but, but the question is, if we don't need a decision now, just to think about, we come back to it. Do we want to have informal policy? Or maybe be a formal policy that. The council meetings will not run past. Ten o'clock. And if we're getting to nine fifty-five, we just wrap up the meeting and we agree, either have a special meeting. Or we do defer everything that's outstanding to. Next work session, the next council meeting. Just, it's a possibility. And I think we have something set up in place, then.
And you can also do it in case by case. I mean, for example, for example. So we've come a long way with this over the years. So when I first started the council, meetings would often go to one.
Oh my god.
And then we would have the mayor's report. Well, usually we'd start the meeting with the mayor's report for like a hour. Okay, so, so when I first became mayor, we still had mayor's report on there and we got, I found it, you know, we don't need this. Another thing that we can eliminate, y'all, is town managers' report. Because the real idea for the town management's report is so the public would hear it. But if it's going to be eleven o'clock at night, they're not going to hear it. Plus, we have so many other ways. So one thing you might want to do is just decide, no, you know, eliminate the town manager's report from the agenda. So today's the thing to think about.
All right.
But that's about the taxes, how do we achieve?
I mean, I mean, one of the reasons why we started the consent agenda was to. Another thing that we've talked about over the years is having a break, uh, having a, a meditation break, remember? You were on the council. We were going to have a meditation, remember, were you here, Mister Town Attorney? We were going to have the meditation break.
I don't remember that, Mister Mayor.
Yeah, we were going to have that. Just saying, and then of course, another reason, another way that we had to on the, on the meeting. Time is by having work sessions.
Right, and I think that's been very beneficial, so.
Uh, and which are really tight, you know, we end at seven thirty.
Have we, you, do you believe you have too many meetings or, there've been occasionally meetings? Because sometimes, you know, it's really, often it is when we have multiple applications.
Yes.
And then we have to do justice to the residents and we, you just can't rush it. And so we will have meetings, I'll just run over, because there are, and there are season, there's a seasonality to it. There's a lot of applications that come at certain periods of time, so we may just, that's part of the volunteerism. Here, we just have to.
What we could do is require the president of the council to propose a motion to adjourn. As they are approaching ten o'clock and see at that.
The, the impetus behind this thought was, I felt that the discussion we had about. The pool fees and the.
Those rush.
And the other pool stuff, it was just a little rushed and. And I, I, I would like to avoid that in the future.
I have a, I have a suggestion on that. I think that we should have a better eye on which items will be. Will actually require, uh, here, uh, someone speaking, like you're in, not just the town manager, because that just adds time. We cannot control how a resident, how long they will talk, what they will say. So there should be some sort of awareness of setting the agenda.
We do, we do that, but it's, it's careless sometimes.
Okay, there you go.
But let me, let me tell you another, let me tell you something else that we thought about. Which is having the building applications during the day. Maybe at noon, and now that we have Zoom. You have them during the day at noon, like, you know, that's what. You know, the county does, they don't have nighttime building application meetings. So think about that, because it's also, you know, in the old days when there wasn't Zoom. And then neighbors, they couldn't come run from work, but now they can.
Well, let me, let me say this, I mean, maybe this is a bit for Shannon too, but I, I rather hash it out. And let the meeting run over, then try and find another slot to schedule it. That gets a little tricky, and it's not just work, it's family. It just gets tricky. And then I feel guilty that I'm not there. And so I, I rather just hash it out. During the day is also hit or miss.
Right, I know. We, we, we want, you know, as I said in orientation two years ago, we want, you know, it's, it, it's your meeting. It needs to be user friendly and we have five people that we need to accommodate all their requirements. Because we, because we, because we want everybody to be here at every meeting. And, and, and just saying with the fantastic attendance that you, your record that you have. I mean, almost everybody has a hundred percent. It's fantastic. That doesn't happen. Isn't that correct, Mister Town Attorney? Isn't our attendance, isn't our attendance rate higher than probably almost anywhere else?
Just say yes.
It's up there, it's up there.
Without disparaging, those other raggedy towns you represent.
You know, but so I think that like, you know, I mean, again, now I'm like all for this, like moving the building application, like deadline earlier. But the more building application issues that we have, then maybe we table like originally from the get-go, like some of these other things. Uh, you know, maybe that are not as crucial.
Make it just an application hearing if it's up.
Everything is important to somebody.
Well, no, I mean, it's important, but like, you know. Maybe we just try to be mindful when we're planning the agenda.
We, we are.
Okay, fine.
There's definitely the.
We're responsible, we are. But that's also, women, that's also why we have the feature. To improve the agenda. And so that is the time when you figure out, how are we going to end this meeting by ten o'clock?
Oh, we can say that.
Because that's the purpose of it. That you can decide, you can decide, that's why we added that. That's why we added that.
We do have work sessions, but do things do get added between work session and final meeting? And I, you know, these are kind of petty issues to pick on. So we just let it go. But sometimes I wonder, like, why did this get added?
That's why.
But that does add to things.
That is why we have that. We never, we didn't have that before, but, but we added that. For these kind of reasons.
I, my view would be seen that there will be times that will go on. It'll probably be because there are applications. I don't think it's true for every meeting. I'm, I'm reluctant to do like, we should have a hard stop.
The German of the meeting.
He can always do that.
Right.
Anyway, grand meeting, everybody. Congratulations on your next two years. Yes, congratulations.
Feel just like yesterday.
Go out to Minnesota.
Minnesota.
But I, maybe it's worth. I know.
So. I never. You told me that, your name today.
Well, I think it was more just.
On the twelfth of July.
Is that what it is?
I think so.